I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for June 17th, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Benke.
President.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Castleberry.
President.
Commissioner Gauss.
President.
All commission members present.
At this time, we will now have a fire department badge presentation by Chief Massengill.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As we've done in the past, most of you have been here for this, but a couple of you may not have. We do badge presentations for promotions or for officers and for when we have firefighters that are actually promoted after their probation is up to the actual firefighter, excuse me, firefighter position. So tonight, we have three. We have a firefighter who has finished his probationary period, and then we have a lieutenant who was promoted and captain. So starting off, we will have Brian Giroux come up. So Brian came to us. He was a firefighter in Cambridge Township, started his firefighting there and his education. And so he has quite a bit of experience as a firefighter and EMT there. So he's working on his paramedic and going to, he finished up his year of probation. So tonight, we're gonna go ahead and give him his firefighter badge. So Captain Hollenbeck is gonna go ahead and put that up and come up here. Be the center of attention. Alright. Next, we have Brad Kirkendall. He was promoted to lieutenant. And there he is. So he was promoted to lieutenant. He came to us with a lot of experience working for a private ambulance company as a paramedic. So glad to have that and also a firefighter, a couple of different fire departments on the west side of the county. And so tonight, his wife and kids are here to go ahead and put his lieutenant's badge on. Alright. And last, we have Captain Jason Hollenbeck. He was promoted. He came to us with a lot of firefighting and EMS experience as a paramedic. So he's been with us about 11 years. I was gonna say 10, so I was, I was close, but so his wife and son are here tonight. You don't wanna come up with them, you're gonna video. Okay, so his son will be pinning his badge on tonight. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So tonight is our first night of the new format that we had voted in recently. So we will begin with public comment regarding items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there will be a three-minute time limit, which you will see on the screen. We will start inside the city chambers first. And please, just as a reminder, it is in our policy, no profanity, no personal attacks. That is all written in there, so just be mindful of that, or you will be asked to stop down from speaking. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Kapnick, City of Adrian, and I want to address nepotism, which was brought up at the last commission meeting and the nepotism policy that is in place. The policy that is in place, the rule is in place, really is about having unfair hiring when you hire family members and which you don't wanna have that. You wanna make sure that you have the most qualified person for the position. That's what the nepotism rule is. What it does not do is it does not preclude hiring family members. They just have to be in the city's best interest and the most qualified person for that position. So I know there is the vote on the city attorney coming up. I read the city administrator's report and that he recommends the, the having the city attorney continue because it is in the best interest of the city. The firm Castleberry and Lucas handles, I believe, over 40 municipalities. Probably the one firm within the county that has the most experience in this. And then the, the city administrator also mentioned, you know, that he hasn't had any problems at all with, with Burke Castleberry. So I highly recommend you continue on and continue with the services of Burke Castleberry. Thank you.
If there is any public comment on Zoom regarding items on the agenda, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we will now move on to our work-study session. And at this point, I will hand it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the meeting where we normally do our strategic plan check-in. And one of the items in your strategic plan is related to asking our transportation authority for an update on their plans for future growth. So I've asked Kate Deisher, who is the executive director, is that your, yeah, executive director of the Lenawee County Transportation.
Lenawee Public Transportation Authority. LPTA.
Which is a newer entity that was created by a merger of the county entity and the city's Dial-A-Ride program funded by Lenawee County and the City of Adrian jointly to come and talk about programs that she's got going on and service expansion efforts that she's engaged in. But I've also asked her to talk about what you talked about previously, which is the role that Uber or ride-sharing could play in the county and particularly if there were some sort of subsidy or support for that. What are her thoughts on that? And so with that, I'll turn it over to Kate. We're kinda getting used to this format, and I'm already seeing that I don't like having to make our, our people who are joining us stand as opposed to sit down with us. But that's our option for the moment. So Kate, take it away and feel free to interject, Commissioners, and Mayor, with any questions you might have of Kate as she goes along.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for letting me come and talk about Lenawee Transportation today. We've had a lot of big changes in the last year. So as Commissioner Elliott had, I'm sorry, Administrator Elliott had stated, we took Lenawee Transportation Corporation and Adrian Dial-A-Ride, which were two business entities, and merged them into one authority. And that took place October of 2022. So we've been about 18 months at that. We currently employ about 13 drivers with two dispatchers. And from October 1st of 2023 till present day, today, we have accomplished over 53,000 rides. That's an average of 285 rides today, or as of today. But today alone, and I thought this was a nice kind of number to give you guys, as hot as it was, and you would think people would stay inside or whatever, we performed 417 rides today. That's a lot of transporting people all around. So in January, we introduced tablets and some dispatch software. It was a little rocky. We had always had paper pencil and our individuals call in and they're used to just blurting out their address and not necessarily their name, and so gathering that information was a little bit difficult. We have transported students from Santa Heights University, as well as Adrian College. Most recently, we have, this is our second year with a relationship with the Cavaliers Drum and Bugle Corps. That's on the campus of Adrian College every summer. I think Tuesdays is their off day, and we take them out to the movies or they go out to Walmart, and we kinda shuttle different groups all around. We also provide some larger group transports as far as that goes. Pathways is one of the preschools here in town. They have a summer program. I believe five days a week, we're taking individuals. They go to the water, the splash park, bone pool, or bowling. So we're getting really big into those Gaslight Village, Hampton Manor. Some of the older nursing homes actually are looking to do some outings. So recently, within the last several months, we started working with brokers to provide transportation for individuals to utilize their insurance benefits. And sometimes these rides are outside of the county. So what that's called is non-emergency medical transportation. So basically, if you have to go to a specialist in Ann Arbor and you don't have the means, you no longer have a driver's license, you don't have family in the area, we can transport you to your doctor's appointment in Ann Arbor. Our vehicle will sit and wait. It's a little bit more of a premium service is what, like I like to call it. If they have insurance coverage, I know Humana is a big one that even on the television says, "We provide transportation coverage." So we've actually worked with brokers to be able to make a relationship with them. The individuals call in for the rides, there's a portal, we turn around, pull the ride in and do that. It's been very successful for us. I'm always looking for creative funding sources to make transportation more accessible for individuals that may have a difficult time affording it. We have created some local partnerships with Wellwise Services, previously Region 2 Area on Aging, the Department of Health and Human Services. We have an agreement with Family Medical. We work with the Department of Aging. We've created some statewide partnerships. We work with Michigan Transportation Connection to receive what's called New Freedom Funding. And that's a grant funding that they would cover 50% of the cost of transportation for senior and individuals that have disabilities. This allows us to have a partnership also with the hospital for discharges. So the hospital will call us and have, you know, a discharge. And if they fall into that senior category, the hospital may pay 50%. And Michigan Transportation Connection, MTC, would pay the other 50% through their grant. We provide, we're on an on-call service with the hospital till about 8 o'clock at night. If they have a discharge, they contact me, and then I secure a driver, and the driver goes out there and brings them back into where they need to go. So we also have entered into, we are a provider for a grant that's geared towards veterans and their transportation needs. That's, was a grant that was, I'm not sure that'll be in existence for a long time, but it was, it's very nice, so the, a veteran can turn around and call the number, schedule the ride, and then they reach out to us and say, "Can you provide this ride for the veteran?" And it's simple things, like we helped a lady pick up a vacuum cleaner last week that was a veteran. We've taken veterans with their animals to the vet, as well as grocery shopping and medical appointments. So we're working really hard right now on a rebranding. It's quite an effort to change the narrative of what public transportation is and create a system that everyone in Lenawee County can benefit from. We no longer are Dial-A-Ride or Lenawee Transportation, and that's a 30-year thing. That's gonna take us a little while for that narrative to change. Everyone still refers to us as Dial-A-Ride. We have some new minivans with some new logos. We have a Ford Transit that's around town. I hope to have a second one secured into our fleet the beginning of September. We have three new buses, and Michelle, I think, just put those up on the screen. They're really sharp. They are unlike anything that we've had here before. They're black. They offer our new logo. We have a website. That's where Michelle's pulling the pictures from. So that's a work in progress. I have a new hire that's a part-time hire that hopefully will help kinda push that a little bit more forward. The website is lptami.gov. And so we are hoping to create links through the city's website, as well as the county's website, because currently, changing that narrative once again, everybody goes to the county site or to the city site to find out about transportation. So we're really trying to push that website out. The Lenawee County Mobility Manager, it's a Michigan Department of Transportation grant-funded position, and it's housed in our building. The Mobility Manager helps individuals with unmet mobility needs and gathers information to be able to provide them with some additional resources. So sometimes they may need a new wheelchair and they don't know how to go about it. Well, we find out, okay, are you a veteran? We can push you in this direction. Are you someone that needs maybe a little bit more level service of care? Why don't we give you a referral to Wellwise for maybe an assessment there? So, so what does the future hold for us? We are gonna continue to increase our ridership, but we really wanna tap into that unmet need market. I would like to change the whole image of what public transportation is. We have dispatch software that has kinda brought us into the newer century. That offers mobile messaging, as well as text or calls for riders to schedule, like on their scheduled rides as reminders. We can move forward with an app within that dispatch software that gives an estimated time of arrival, as well as there currently, other platform is working on booking apps, a booking app for the rides. So this will help reach that market of the younger generation that's a little bit more tech savvy. Our clientele currently is kind of the, because that's what they're familiar with, they're the calling in. But if we had some type of a mobile messaging app, which the dispatch software is working towards younger generations, they just wanna push the button and not have to have the exchange of conversation. So one thing that we will probably be looking at in the future is we do all of this with funding through Michigan Department of Transportation. We have an appropriation from the city, as well as the county. But when those percentages are pulled back from us, we have to make cuts in certain areas in order to meet budget. And so in the past, we have actually offered service till 8 o'clock at night, and we did offer Saturday service. And because it wasn't as thriving as we would have liked it to have been, I think that it would be worthwhile for us to potentially go out for a millage vote to help secure some additional funding, to be able to pay drivers more of a living wage, as far as that goes, and be able to secure some additional talent. Currently, CDL drivers can make more money driving for a farm than they can driving for my transportation. And it's a very dear thing to my heart. A lot of the people that we transport have no other means to get where they need to go. And so it's unfortunate. I'm very proud of my drivers. They had a really hot day today. They use the lifts up and down for individuals in wheelchairs and such. And it's, it's not an easy job, but they show up to work every day with a smile on their face.
So what are your current hours then, right now?
Our current hours, I have a dispatcher in at 6:15 in the morning. What we do is we have routes to Combsy, Blissfield, Morencie. We call it Rome-Hudson area. Those buses leave the garage about 6:30 and pick up a lot of individuals, bring them back into town. They're usually here by 8:30. That same group would turn around and then leave town about 2:15, 2:30, and take back to those outside areas. So the dispatcher's there at 6:15. 7 o'clock is kind of when city transportation really starts thriving. A lot of people need to get to work, get to medical appointments. And then our last call currently is at 3:30. And so as long as you call by 3:30, we can, you know, pick you up, get you where you need to go. We do have, we've implemented on that, the phone shut off at 3:30, but we've had some situations where people weren't home, and then how do you get through? So we have an after-hours line that the phone rings. If you're looking for your child that maybe didn't get home on time or that, then that phone rings. We pick that up and make, you know, the connection with the parent that way.
So it just wasn't profitable? Like you, you were losing money then by having it go on Saturdays and then into the evenings on weekdays?
Well, it was actually funny, because one of my drivers said today, "Well, we were busy, yeah, but you guys said you're busier in the winter?" Yeah, because the people that live in Adrian can walk when it's nice and beautiful today. So it does. We would be busy like one big Saturday per month. And so a lot of times that is coincides with when people receive their pay. And so one Saturday a month, we may have a really great busy time. I contemplated maybe doing every other Saturday, but no one thinks, is this the Saturday that they're open or not? So the scheduling of that was. MDOT, we received a lot of funding through the COVID period. And so when the COVID funds kind of dried up a little bit and pulled back, then they dropped our percentage that they actually give to us significantly. So it was not necessarily profitable. We're not into this profitable. I don't know if everyone knows what our fare structure is, but if you're a senior or disabled individual, it's $1.50. If you are an individual like myself or anyone else, April body here in the room, it's $3. So I can go to Walmart for $3, and then they can pick me up at Walmart for $3, $6. I question whether you can even run your car that cheap when you add the insurance and all that. So if you're looking at $1.50 per ride, I'm not, I do, I have to do a lot of $1.50 rides in order to make my budget. And so that's where we've reached out to this, you know, kinda trying to grab a larger audience than what we're currently had in the past. But yeah, it just wasn't profitable. I mean, and we don't do things based on profitable, though. We do things based on need. But when I have to make a cut, I have to make a cut on something that I know I can. I can't, fuel prices fluctuate, so the only thing I basically kind of control over is wages, and so I have to pull back on hours. A lot of times, my drivers would be on overtime if they did that. And I'm also bound by state regulations that if I have a driver on the road, I also have to have a dispatcher in the office. So I'm paying a driver time and a half, as well as a dispatcher time and a half. So.
Kate, how are, how are your rates set? Are they mandated to be at that level, or?
They are not. But when we made the merge previously, if you were in the City of Adrian, it was $1 for seniors and disabled individual and $2 for full fare, is what we call it. When we merged, Lenawee Transportation already had the fare structure of $1.50 and $3. When we moved the city technical riders over 50 cents, it was terrible. Everyone's like, "Oh, my gosh, that's so much more money." And I understand that, but 50 cents didn't seem like a lot in the picture of things. But I did get a lot of pushback. I would like to increase fares. If I go through other agencies that we have here in the state of Michigan, I think we're probably on the lower side, for sure. No one mandates that. That's just kind of been what's been in best practices here for several years. But I felt that when I changed into the authority to take somebody from a dollar to jump them up to like three, that would be a little bit more catastrophic for someone who's really pinching pennies to get rides anyways.
You were talking about a millage or some type of increase with that. What's the projection in terms of that prospect?
As far as that goes, so when I do my budget, I'm usually have about anywhere from a 3, $250,000 to $300,000 shortfall, that that's what we're responsible to come up with, all on those $1.50 daily rides. So like I said, that takes a lot of rides to get to $250,000, and that's at set costs. So if I add on a driver and an additional, you know, to be able to do that, then my wages go up. So then I may be at a $325,000, $30,000 increase. So with the budget, it fluctuates enough. If I, if I have been told correctly, 1/10 of a mil could supplement me. I believe the figure was told to me at $500,000. That would double what I actually have to make up on my own right now.
And that would be a county-wide millage?
County-wide millage.
So as an older person like myself, for $1.50 each way, I could go from Morencie to Clinton. That seems ridiculously low.
It is.
Other communities that I've lived in in the past, they do fares based on zones, where, you know, if you're in Zone 1 and you need to go to Zone 4, the fare is different than going from Zone 1 to Zone 1. Have you considered that, or would that, would that work in our community?
We have considered that, but then once again, when I made the merge and the 50 cents was so catastrophic, you know what I mean, and shocking to people, that yes, we have. As far as the zone goes, we just have not got to the point of where are those zones? And when you say that, you can go to Morencie. What we try to encourage people to do, it is county transportation. But what we try to encourage them to do is if you can come in on the morning route with us and you've got an errand or something to do here in town, and then ride back on the afternoon, it's cost-effective for us, because we're already going out that way. If it's a medical appointment or something like that, that's where I talked about how we're trying to get this creative funding sources and that, so that I can come out and pick you up at your house and take you to your doctor's appointment and take you directly back. So we have a great agreement with Family Medical. We call them up, they have a patient. We'll say, "Hey, will you cover their ride?" Absolutely. I mean, we had three today for tomorrow and no questions asked. So it is unbelievably cheap at $1.50. And so for $3, I don't know where you're gonna get any type of transportation. I mean, I don't even think it's that cheap in bigger cities that have way more resources than here. Any other questions?
Can you comment a little bit? You and I talked on the phone today about the whole idea of ride-sharing and where that might fit. And just give us your thoughts on that.
Okay. I do think there's a need in some respect, because I'm not open at midnight to take people home from the bars. And I think that's a great service, rather than someone having a drunk driving on their record or driving and injuring on other individuals. It just, at this point, I'm spread pretty thin as far as that goes with drivers. And so to have them on the clock that long. So I do think that there's a need potentially here in the community. My biggest concern would be if you were to help sponsor or supplement someone who's trying to start a business, rather than put it into your own public transportation. So if an Uber comes into town here, it's just like I've ran that 8 p.m. service, and I ate the cost of that until it, and if it didn't take off and I didn't have great marketing material and all that, I ate the cost of that. So I guess my concern would be if you come in and you're helping sponsor an Uber, why wouldn't you put those funds towards a public transportation and give them the opportunity? Because in the end, the Uber is gonna get paid by the rider. And so for me, I think there is a need for it. It's, it's maybe outside of my service hours. But I, I would caution, only because in the individuals that I've worked with, we've had individuals that have had rides scheduled through Uber to make it to their medical appointments and then have not shown up through Uber or Lyft. And so people in the community right now are very worried about Uber as far as that goes, because if they're going to a specialist and then you get a call 20 minutes before you're supposed to get picked up and your Uber cancels, they're in panic mode. And then they put me in panic mode, because now I'm trying to get to them and get them to their appointment. So that would be my concern with Uber. I think that there could be a need for that, like in the later evening and even the weekend hours. The clientele that I transport are more of the pick up the phone and call. But I do think that we have the two, you know, the college and the university here in town, and the younger generation has that app mentality. And that's where in the future, you know, I'm trying to get towards that and capture that market. So I guess that would just be my concern as far as that goes. If there was additional funding, I would love to be able to do some type of a pilot program or, you know, have the, you know, the commission here come to me and pitch ideals to me, because I'm open for any ideals. I don't think I've said no to anything pretty much since I've been here. So yeah, I'll say, "I'll try," or "Let me research that and stuff." But I'm totally up for any type of.
Kate, do any of your grants stop you from having another like branch that would be maybe a taxi-type service in the evenings? Could you have like, I mean, if there were enough support for that, could you, where your fees are different than what they are during the day for the, you know, the grant-sponsored rides? Is there a potential to have like another branch of this that be like the fees of a normal taxi ride or something? So people are, don't wanna get a DUI and they need a ride home or whatever? Is there a potential for that? If there is, is the?
We are not bound, from my awareness, I'm not bound by anything for that as far as that goes. We did. as that goes. We did up our fare structure for that. And so when we had that eight o'clock service, we charged four dollars, no matter if you were senior, disabled or whatever, because that was what I needed to have help offset the cost of that program. And like I said, we ran it for probably about six, seven months. And maybe two days a week I'd get somebody, you know, I mean, so it was difficult from that perspective, but I'm not bound. They have different, you have, you know, demand response, you have paratransit, you have all these other things. So it could potentially be something that we could, you know, entertain.
And just one, I want to thank you again for how much work you did way back at Riverview Terrace. I don't think anybody realizes how instrumental Lenawee Transportation was in moving people a lot. That was a lot. And just, I hope you, we're very grateful for all that you did during that time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else for Kate?
Is there a millage proposal in the works?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No, that's, I've not went for a millage. That's not my background or whatever. So I'm kind of working with some state administrators and that through MDOT and they call it Michigan Public Transportation Access. Clark Carter, he is a politician that actually has spoke with me and said, okay, this is what you would need to do in that. It was, this past year is really, let's get the authority up and running and stuff. But now I'm looking, you know, forward in what we need to sustain. So I don't have anything in the works, 2025, maybe at the earliest. And I don't even know what's anything out there. They tell you to match it with certain things because voter turnout is better. So I'm in the early stages of researching that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. That was the only thing we had scheduled for the work session portion of the meeting tonight. But if any of the commissioners have something that they want to talk about before we move into the regular meeting, now would be the time to do that.
The Community Academy information was recently published and on our website, right, Michelle? So the Adrian Community Academy application is out there and we have bumped it up to being able to host 25 people. Met with a couple of other commissioners, Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Schwartz, longtime educators, went through the surveys and reviewed what needs to change and make it better for this next group of students in our academy. And I met with the department heads a couple of weeks ago, got their buy-in and yeah, we're moving forward on it. So if you're, if you know of anyone who's interested in the academy, the application is out there.
And the session starts September?
September 4th, if that's the Wednesday. I believe it's September 4th. And it runs through the first Wednesday in November, I think November 6th, if I remember the dates correctly. Same time, 6:30 to 8. Yeah, we have some new, new things in the works. So that's good.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Hearing none? Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the regular meeting.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castelberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Agenda approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castelberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R24-025 is from administration. It is a resolution regarding the city attorney position. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments on this resolution?
No.
No. Oh, I don't do that. That's right. You know how old I am. It's hard to break. Sorry. Forgot.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any, sorry, is there any discussion on this resolution with the commissioners?
Commissioner or city administrator Elliot, can you explain the changes that took place from the last meeting?
Well, we, we drafted a resolution for your consideration based on the discussion we had at work session last time. We included a couple of things in there that were generally discussed. Hopefully it's in accord with the commissioner's interests, monthly reports from the city attorney and an annual written evaluation of the city attorney to be reported out to the commission. That answers your question.
Yep. And will that evaluation process established by the administrator and the city attorney moving forward in terms of the tool?
Yeah, we'll have to work out what the nature of that is between the city attorney and myself. But the way I envisioned it was that because I have, or the city administrator has the most contact with the city attorney, that the city administrator would prepare the evaluation and review it with the city commission. Thank you.
Hearing no more discussion, we have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castelberry? Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Banky?
Yes.
Resolution approved by a six zero vote with one abstention.
Moving on, commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? Okay, at this time, we will now have general public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit. For the record, please state your name and place of residence. And also just to reiterate, please refrain from any profanity or personal attacks. We will start inside the city chambers first. When we've exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hi, I'm Jerick Tim, Adrian city resident. I'm here to address the longstanding systemic neglect of non automotive modes of transportation by the policies of our city. Despite supposed commitments to complete streets and Vision Zero over the better part of the past decade, not a single repaved street meets the criteria for these initiatives. The city's failure to integrate safe, accessible sidewalks, crossings and bike lanes demonstrates a clear bias towards car centric policies in practice, resulting in over a hundred traffic incidents involving pedestrians and people on bikes since making these commitments, most of which occurring on streets that fall squarely under the control of the city. The city unfairly places the burden of installation and maintenance on sidewalks on property owners, claiming it's equitable because eventually everyone will bear these costs. This ignores the reality in mobility and housing dynamics in Adrian. Most of our sidewalks are at the bare minimum width, with many in disrepair or nonexistent, ending, leaving pedestrians stranded, even, even along freshly repaved streets. This disproportionately affects individuals with disabilities. The demographic our city has a higher rate of compared to others. Moreover, the city flagrantly violates its own ordinances and state laws regarding pedestrian accessibility, making sidewalks impassable for those using mobility aids and forcing pedestrians into dangerous situations with traffic. This includes widespread violations by businesses and even city employees, which not only disregards the law, but also exposes the city to potential ADA lawsuits. For example, currently, the city is actively breaking section 74-12B of our, our city code of ordinances, just a block from where this meeting takes place and has been for several weeks, while another property directly across the street is breaking the same ordinance, requiring people to walk in traffic lanes if they're able, or go all the way around the block to get around these unlawful obstructions. On top of that, on my walk to this meeting, an engineering truck was parked within five feet of a marked crosswalk, curb cut, in the public lot right behind City Hall. Turning to bike lanes, existing bike lanes are sporadic, often dangerously narrow, full of debris, and routinely obstructed by the same parked cars all day and/or city equipment. These lanes fail to provide safe passage for cyclists, contributing to an environment where biking feels perilous rather than protected. Critiques and proposed solutions for the Bike Loop project have been all but completely dismissed, sending a clear message that cyclist safety is not a priority for this city. Finally, while progress has been made, our city's public transit system needs expanded hours. Residents that rely on that service can even make it to these meetings as the service ends hours prior to this, to the start of these meetings, leaving them unrepresented. Attempting to rely on services like Uber as a supplemental option is not only unrealistic, but excludes those who cannot afford such options and ignores the issues other cities have had with these services, price gouging, and being unreliable. I urge the city to prioritize equitable transportation policies that support all residents, not just those with cars. It's time for actionable steps to fulfill the promises of complete streets and Vision Zero and ensure ADA compliance in our public spaces, expand and protect bike lanes, and overhaul our public transit system. Thank you.
Hi, Gail Dunaway. I'm sorry to see our fire guys have just left, but I had a couple gentlemen come to my house last Thursday and Jason and Don, and they did a very admirable job. I am just flush with carbon monoxide and smoke detectors, so I feel very safe. Not that I've ever had a problem in the past and did whatever that young man said.
Stephanie Kuiper, Park Street here in Adrian. So I work for a local bank. I'm not here representing that bank, so I'm not going to tell you which bank it is. But banks, we love our acronyms and our regulations. And we have an acronym regulation entitled UDAAP. It was set up when Dodd-Frank passed, and then the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau kind of fleshed it out how it all works out. And it stands for the unfair deceptive or abusive acts and practices, UDAAP. There's a quiz on that tomorrow. So what that requires us to do is review our products, our services, whether checking accounts or loan accounts, things like that, and ask certain questions about them. So specifically, like a fee, how fair is a fee? Is it properly disclosed? Is there a defined path to avoid the fee? Or is it attached to a product or service and applied equally? So beyond the, the written and electronic disclosures, which nobody reads except for banking nerds, you know, how are we communicating and applying and enforcing the fee? So UDAAP is designed, and there's a point, just bear with me, is designed to prevent discrimination, whether overt or covert. Not only we're, we're trained not to discriminate, how do I identify discrimination? But we're required to have systems in place so that if somebody accidentally or purposefully discriminated, that behavior would be stopped and the client would be treated fairly. We also have to look at the impact or the effect that a product, fee or service has on a protected class or a group of individuals. We should all be familiar, hopefully, with the term redlining, which took place a long time ago. It's illegal now, but the effects are still felt today. So here's my point. The city commission has passed a new point of sale ordinance. It's done. It's passed, okay? For better, for worse. Now comes the part of fleshing it out, of creating the actual process whereby this ordinance will be applied and enforced. I would ask that you take a page from what the banks have to do and apply that UDAAP, unfair deceptive abusive acts and practices, when it comes to the impact. So as you flesh this out, we have a city attorney. City attorneys know how to make rules, not break rules, because that's not what they do, but how to interpret the laws such that there's not a negative impact on protected classes, specific neighborhoods, vulnerable populations. From a bank's perspective, a thirty dollar bounce check fee hits harder for somebody that's on a fixed income than it does for somebody that makes six figures. So my ask is that you consider strongly the impact of the process and the procedures as you flesh out your implementation of this ordinance. Thanks.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no more public comment, we will now begin commissioner comments. I will start it off and just wanted to let everyone know that the Juneteenth flag and proclamation are sitting in City Hall outside the mayor's office. I presented the proclamation at Juneteenth this past Saturday at the Celebration Downtown, and that proclamation is sitting there. So invite the public in to take a look at that. And also wanted to remind you that City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth. So also just putting that out there. But we had two events that happened in the city this past weekend at Parish Park. They had All About Adrian put on their second Friday. And, you know, it was, it was a little toasty and the, and the attendance, and they haven't done it in a while. So the attendance was a little low, but they are really hoping to get that up and going again. And a lot of people came out though wanting and needing some food. And they, they were giving out food at the event. So it was a great event, had a lot of families come out, a great event there. And then following day, a great event downtown right here on our city street for Juneteenth. And want to thank the NAACP for working in conjunction with the DDA on making that a great event.
Just wanted to say after 32 hours of traveling back from Moriama with eight middle school students that I survived, did sleep very well. But it was, it was an amazing trip. Our hosts in Moriama were once again open hearted and open homed. Plenty of opportunities for our eight middle school students from across all of Lenawee County to experience the, not only the educational system within Japan, but the, the culture and the, the rich history and heritage that each of those host families had the opportunity to share with them. And then following the experience in Moriama, we went to Kyoto and then to the Peace Garden in Hiroshima, which was probably most moving for all, all of the students. And the students well represented the city of Adrian and Lenawee County far and wide. Do want to talk that on September 15th, there will be a Hispanic Heritage event that's going to take place, that's going to be sponsored by Lead Adrian. The planning for that has already taken place and is moving forward quickly. And lastly, the Continuum of Care has recently updated its support services flyer. This is when you as a commissioner or anyone in the audience has questions about where local food distribution opportunities, our veteran services, medical facilities, various community agencies or legal aid, recovery, resources and shelters. This was most recently updated and is now out in the public as a tool for those that are in dire need of our community. So feel free to, to share this as well. Thank you.
Thank you for putting up with the new structure and, and some of the little bumbleings going through as, as we get used to this. We, but we do appreciate, you know, help spread the word that it is new now that we, we run the work study into, it's part of our, our meeting now. And, you know, just really anybody in the public that can spread the word and let people know that this is our new meeting structure, because I think it's going to still throw some people off for a while because it hasn't been like this before. So we appreciate that. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.